Well, good morning to, and good morning to the regular board meeting for the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for March 26th. And if you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have a roll call?
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Horsley.
Here. And we have one person for public comment. This is time for public comment on any item not on the regular agenda. Marty Fox.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malphey. Thank you for your service to the county. Please provide persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to understand their need for treatment sufficiently to seek it voluntarily. An opportunity to experience a treatment selection and compliance behavioral situation when requested by their family members, friends, neighbors, and all of those concerned about the safety of mentally ill persons and public safety in a least restrictive situation, such as assisted outpatient treatment known as LoR's Law. LoR's Law is an effective, efficient, and economical recidivism reduction practice that the United States Department of Justice certified a year ago this month. Creating a treatment compliance behavioral situation would relieve some of the fears and suffering of family members, their friends, neighbors, and those concerned about treatment resistance among former school students whose behavior deteriorates over an extended period of time, including the families of local and state law enforcement officers. Please give priority to restoring the health and safety of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment, and their families who can protect themselves and others from former student violence. The about-to-be-diagnosed, worried-well, and those who volunteer for treatment are important. However, they do not present a threat of former student violence like that seen in Connecticut, Colorado, or Arizona. More spending on housing, support groups, and educational services is just doing the same thing that enabled the former student violence to furnish flourish in the first place. Please give people living with mental illness an opportunity to heal, become healthy, and give hope to their families.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, next is the opportunity, or time to set the agenda and to approve or not approve the consent agenda items. And Supervisor Pine has already indicated he'd like to have item 24 removed from consent and put off, basically. Removed from today's agenda.
Mr. President, for the record, I recuse myself from the preparation or the recommendations contained in item 14.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'll move to set the agenda and approve the consent items other than the two items that Mr. Malphey is going to recuse himself on item number 14. And Mr. Pine has asked to move item number 24 to a future date. With that, I'll make the motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is set. Now, the presentation awards. This, the first presentation is honoring Supervisor Carol Groom upon receiving the California Parks and Recreation Society Champion of the Community Award. California Parks and Recreation Society, they recently held their annual statewide conference on March 8th in San Jose. And at the meeting, our very own Supervisor Carol Groom was awarded with the organization's Champion of the Community Award. The award honors individuals who have demonstrated consistent support for parks, open space, and recreational programs in their communities. And Supervisor Groom has received this award in recognition of her years of dedicated work promoting parks and recreation programs in San Mateo County, including, but not limited to, Streets Alive, Parks Alive, the Annual Act of San Mateo County Conference, and her many years of service to the San Mateo Police Activities League and the San Mateo County Parks and Recreation Foundation. Carol was nominated for this award by the Parks and Recreation Directors of San Mateo County. And they are represented today here by Sheila Kanzian, the Director of Park and Recreation for the City of San Mateo. So, on behalf of the supervisors, let me offer my congratulations to Supervisor Carol Groom and Ms. Kazangian, or Kanzian, with what she's going to present to Carol with this prestigious award.
Thank you, President Horsley and members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Sheila Kanzian, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of San Mateo, but I am here on behalf of the San Mateo County Park and Recreation Directors Association. This is an annual awards program that our professional society provides. And there was unanimous support among all of the directors in San Mateo County that we could think of no better person to honor as a champion of the community than Carol Groom. I've certainly known Carol for many years with her work on the San Mateo City Council and her support of many projects in San Mateo. But I think it's really with her work on the county Board of Supervisors and her support of all of the activities that Dawn mentioned that we believe that she was worthy of this award. Carol couldn't make it to the annual awards dinner in San Jose a couple of weeks ago. And we thought that the second-best presentation was really before her colleagues here at the board. So, Carol, on behalf of all of the directors in San Mateo County, we want to present you with the Champion of the Community Award for all the support that you give to parks.
Wow.
Well, Carol, that was a very well-deserved recognition for all of your work on park and recreation. And I know there are other things that you've been interested in children in San Mateo County as well. Any other comments?
I would just say thank you very much to Sheila and to the Park and Rec Directors in San Mateo County. It's, you know, one person doesn't do anything, doesn't do, doesn't do at all. There's so many great people in our county who believe in parks and who believe in recreation programs. And so, when you, when you have, when you have kind of an idea, there's a lot of people that are willing to help you finish it up. And so, but I'm still very, very honored. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is the Presentation of Accommodations honoring the dental professionals who participated in the 2013 Give Kids a Smile Day. Supervisor Pine?
Well, thank you Supervisor Horsley. So, this is the time of year we take a moment to recognize the contributions of our dental community. And each year, thousands of the nation's dentists and their dental teams provide free oral health care services to children from low-income families across the country. The American Dental Association's Give Kids a Smile program enhances the oral health of a large number of needy children. The Give Kids a Smile activities also highlights for policymakers the challenges that low-income families face in finding dental care. It's always sobering when you hear the stories of children that really can't, or have difficulty getting that care. And it can affect their success in school and their overall health. So, since February 2003, the Give Kids a Smile Day program has grown to a local and national event. Dentists and their teams volunteer their time and services to provide screenings and treatments and education to children. Each year, about 450,000 children benefit from the program. This year, here in our county, 12 dentists participated and provided care to 70 children in need. So, I'd like to invite a few folks to come forward and talk a little bit about the program. That's Dr. Dorothy Vera Wees, Dr. Anne Marie Svestry, and Dr. Richard Gregory. And after that, we have a couple of commendations.
Good morning, Board, President Horsley, Supervisors Pine and Groom, Tissier and Slocum, and County Manager Malphey, and Assistant Manager Holland, and County Council Byers. Thank you very much for taking time today to recognize the importance of dental health, which is such an important part of overall health and well-being. Ensuring good dental health for our children, our families, and the seniors in San Mateo County takes a whole community of effort. The first step is that we're very lucky that water is fluoridated in most of our county. This helps to build strong teeth as they're developing in children. And we need to encourage people to drink this good tap water and also to continue to provide fluoride supplements in the areas that don't have fluoridation. Second step is knowledge of oral health and hygiene habits and healthy eating. This is provided by doctors and nurses at regular well, baby, well-child checkups, by dentists and dental assistants and dental hygienists, by teachers and childcare workers, and community workers who teach the Brighter Bites program, and by parents and grandparents to their families. Third step is the identification of dental problems and treatment of them. And this is where the dentists who participated in Give Kids a Smile Day have been so important as they step forward to provide service to the community. These and the other dentists throughout our county are essential to restoring and maintaining dental health. And then the fourth step is building the infrastructure and the systems of care so that dental services are available to all the residents of our county. We've made a lot of progress here through expansion of county dental clinics and reaching out through the Oral Health Coalition. We appreciate your support of all of these efforts and appreciate the opportunity to continue working with you. Thank you very much.
Good morning, friends and Board and county staff. I want to thank you for recognizing my passion, dental health for the lower, the underinsured. This is especially important for both children and seniors. Give Kids a Smile Day allows it to become recognized nationally. Dental health is the gateway to systemic health. I represent San Mateo Medical Center, a place where we give kids a smile every day in our seven clinics. That's, of course, when they're not crying because they're getting the treatment they need. We, this past year, treated over 6,000 children, and this is the first year that we were able to actually participate and give kids a smile. I'm very proud of the dental staff at San Mateo Medical Center, and I really thank you for allowing us to do this. Thank you.
Good morning, and once again, thank you for all the support that you've shown as Chair of the San Mateo County Oral Health Coalition and San Mateo County Dental Society Community Outreach Director. I just want to comment that this type of problem, access to dental care for not only the children, but the entire community, is a very complicated problem. There's a lot of barriers to access, and there's a lot of reasons why any particular individual may or may not have access to care at different times in their life. And it's a problem that requires the collaboration, really cross-sector collaboration. No one individual or organization can tackle this. And having the support of a government entity is really critical to the private sector and the nonprofit. And I'd like to remind everybody in the room that the mouth infections decay in the case of children, and periodontal disease and decay in the case of adults, and particularly older adults. It's a, it's a chronic disease, like many other systemic illnesses, that is present from cradle to grave. It's across the lifespan of an individual. We do a great job, I think, for children. We could do a lot more. And I just want to add that there's a particularly critical problem for seniors in our community, particularly because of the rapidly aging population, that we really haven't done a great job of tackling it. It's a little more complicated and something that we intend to do a lot more about in the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your comments. I'll just add two things. And I recall about a year ago, I had a chance to visit the clinic's, the county's mobile dental van, which was really impressive. You could, you know, call office, it was mobile. And also, there's another event coming up concerning the dental care in the county. Next Friday, April 12th, at 10:30, there's going to be a rollout of the so-called virtual dental home, which is a telehealth technology used by dentists that Ms. Gregory's been very, very involved in. So, we are doing a lot of good work on this front. So, finally, I think we may have a couple of folks here today who would like to give these certificates to. So, Ms. Diaz, Ms. Vavafi, Ms. Diaz and Anne Marie. See if you could come up and give you these certificates. And I think the dental, the Barker Dental Team is here. If you want to just stand up for a second, we'll have to recommend you. If there are others here.
Okay. Thanks Supervisor Pine. That really is an important part of health. Next item is recognition of rapid response for disaster avoidance at the San Mateo Medical Center. Supervisor Tessier?
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the bravery and decisive action taken by the San Mateo Medical Center staff in response to a recent escalated incident. As you may have heard, staff found a patient starting a fire in a hospital room. While risking their own safety, the nurses, housekeeping, and security staff worked together to quickly put out the fire, contain the patient who started the fire, and evacuate about 30 patients on two floors. When the first responders arrived, staff were treated for smoke inhalation. The evening staff even stayed overtime to assist their colleagues on the night shift. I want to have everyone join me in expressing our gratitude to the staff of the medical center for their teamwork, courage, and commitment to the safety of their patients. And I'm going to mention the individuals that we're going to honor today, but I'd also, before we actually give those commendations out, I'd like to ask Dr. Ehrlich to come forward. But the individuals that we're honoring today, Malu Cruz, who is the nurse manager for Unit 1A, Sue Peterson, the nursing supervisor that evening, Philamon Doria helped out to put out the fire, and Derek Miranda was there from housekeeping, and Eldrick Roth from security. So, we'll be honoring those individuals in just a moment. Dr. Ehrlich?
Good morning. I'm Susan Ehrlich from San Mateo Medical Center, President Horsley, Supervisors, Mr. Byers, Mr. Malphey, and Mr. Holland. Thank you so much for having me come and talk to you a little bit about this event. It was a truly frightening event, and to tell you just a little bit more about it, I ask you to imagine yourselves on our skilled nursing Unit 1A at about 10:30 on a Tuesday night. It's busy there, but quiet, and it's typically a pretty predictable environment. But that night, all of a sudden, you're there and you begin to smell smoke, definitely not something in the ordinary. And then you realize that it's coming from one particular patient room. The first person to spring into action was Philamon Doria. He realized that the door, the door was closed, and he tried to open it and found that it was not, he was not able to open it. Not thinking for another second, he started to kick the door open and realized that the door had been barricaded by the patient who was, who was in there. He got the door open, and all of a sudden, the patient came at him with a knife. The patient fortunately retreated without, without injuring Philamon. And at that point, Philamon retreated as well, but came back with Derek Miranda and Eldrick Roth. And all three of them successfully put out the fire that was going in the room, in multiple places within the room, and contained the situation until our brave colleagues from police and fire arrived. At that point, other people in the medical center began to be aware that something was going on. In addition to the thick smoke that pervaded the unit at that time, there was a lot of commotion. And our nursing supervisor, Sue Patterson, who generally takes on the role of incident commander when there's an emergency after hours, sprang into action. Sue provided outstanding leadership during the crisis. She called police, she called me, and a few other people to come and help along. And the 1A team managed the evacuation of all the 30 patients in that unit within 15 minutes. They, they initially took them to the adjacent Unit 1B, which is empty, and then subsequently moved them to the emergency department where they stayed until they could be safely placed into rooms on the second floor. The skilled nursing staff did evacuate those patients in less than 15 minutes, made sure that all the doors, fire doors and doors to the patient rooms were closed. And as a result, none of the patients on that unit were injured, suffered smoke inhalation damage. Sue did assess the staff who were there for smoke inhalation damage. Some of them were assessed in the emergency department, but thankfully, none of them either were injured. So, there were many people, in fact, everyone who was in the medical center that night really worked together and helped solve this terrible disaster. I'm so proud of this team. I'm very grateful to be, have been able to work with our colleagues from police and fire, who were incredibly helpful and collegial during that time. But mostly, I want to thank you for allowing us to recognize these very brave individuals.
Dr. Ehrlich, don't go away.
Why don't you stay there while I present you?
First off, I'd like to ask Malu Cruz to come forward. She's the nurse manager for Unit 1A. I'll be presenting her with the commendation as well as one for those on that unit, so they can have something there as well. Sue Peterson? Philamon Doria? Derek Miranda? And last but not least, Eldrick Roth. Congratulations to all of you. You guys can be on my team anytime.
Yeah, just to make a quick comment that, also, I saw some pictures of a hazmat team that the hospital handled recently, and it was, again, really well-done. So, congratulations to you and your, to our staff. Next item is item four, enacting as the governing board of County Service Area Number 7. We have a public hearing on an ordinance for water rates. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Horsley, members of the Board, Mr. Holland, Mr. Malphey, and Mr. Byers. I'm here today to present a recommendation for a three-year rate adjustment for County Service Area Number 7 in the La Honda community that provides water service to that area. In terms of structure, CSA 7 is a separate and independent entity from other county operations. It has its own budget, and revenue sources are exclusively from the sales of water that we provide to the customers, as well as other charges such as the meter services and other fee-for-service charges that the customers request. At this point, the rates that we have in place do not support even our operational costs. And that is causing our fund balance to erode to a point where the CSA 7 district will be insolvent within a year. In terms of administration, the Department of Public Works and Parks serves as the certified operator for CSA 7. We did that actually until October 2011. At that time, due to a gentleman, one of our certified operators, leaving the county as well as a retirement in the Parks Division, we contracted with Bracewell Engineering to provide that service, and they are providing that service currently. As I mentioned, the financing for this district is rather precarious at this time. We have a fund balance of roughly $65,000. The current rates provide about $39,000 a year, but our expenditures are about $100,000 a year. So, if you add that all up and look at the fund balance, as I mentioned, we will be in the red in 2014. The water rates that are being proposed are, provide significant increases. And those increases are 66% in the first year and 33% in the next two years. And these rates were developed with a customer advisory group from the CSA 7 community that we've been meeting with since 2011, and that group has recommended that these rates be implemented. In terms of the system itself, it's a somewhat complex system to operate. We draw water out of Alpine Creek, that then goes into a storage tank. The raw water is stored and then treated from a treatment facility. And from there, it goes to a different tank where it's held for, for use. That water is then distributed to the CSA 7 customers, as well as probation who operates Camp Glenwood. And a very small percentage of that water goes to Sam McDonnell Park for use in that area. In terms of the system, we have roughly a little over two miles' worth of pipes that are fairly old and in very difficult terrain. Some of these pipes run through Sam McDonnell Park. And in fact, we had a water outage in 2011 that was caused from a tree falling and breaking a pipe. The reason why this is significant is it's very difficult for us to maintain these pipes in these situations. And when there is a leak, it's difficult to find where that leak is. So, we are in a situation where we've got old lines through difficult terrain, and it just means that the operating costs are somewhat, somewhat expensive. The other thing about CSA 7 is it's very remote and it's small. So, La Honda is roughly a 45-minute drive from Redwood City. When we have emergencies, we dispatch not only Bracewell, but our staff. So, to get to CSA 7, it's quite a drive, and that adds to our costs of maintaining that district. We do have a need to set aside some reserves for emergencies. As I mentioned, trees fall in that area. We had difficult storms over the Christmas holidays this year that caused an outage. So, when these emergencies occur, we need to be able to have money in the bank to be able to make the repairs that we need. In the case of emergencies, we seek reimbursement. But in some cases, such as the tree falling, that is not a recoverable expense from the state. We also need reserves for capital improvements. This system has been in place for quite a while, and the pipes are old, and they're beginning to show signs of wear and tear, and they're breaking. And we need to be able to go in and repair those and also try to reroute those pipes out of some of these difficult locations so we have better access. In terms of water quality and operating, up until 2011, County Department of Environmental Health oversaw water operations, or oversaw the regulatory function for overseeing this water system. In 2011, that responsibility was turned over to the state. And in that time, the requirements for maintaining a water system have also gotten a little bit more stringent so that it's costing us a lot of money to comply with state regulations to operate this plant. And that's not specific to CSA 7. That is happening to all water systems, and it's happening on the sewer side as well. But we're seeing, as the regulatory climate becomes more and more restrictive, compliance with that is getting more and more expensive. In terms of our short-term priorities for maintaining the system, we want to make sure that we have an operations plan in place that's required by the state that includes all of the- That includes all of the requirements listed here. Another short-term priority is making sure that when we treat this water, we're complying with the limits on the disinfection byproducts. So when we pull that water out of the creek, it needs to be treated to be able to serve to the customers. And as part of that process, there's some residual chemicals that can be in the water supply. We're making every effort to reduce those below what is allowed by the state. And then finally, we want to make sure that the system itself and the CSA 7 area has been surveyed because of the sanitary sewer treatment up there, which is basically septic systems, to make sure that there's no chance of that getting into our water system. In terms of long-term, we really do need to start addressing capital. We have a master plan that has not been able to be implemented because of our lack of funds in this district. So we need to go in, we need to replace pipes, we need to do seismic upgrades to our storage tanks, and we need to look at additional storage, so that when we do have an outage, we've got an ample supply of water to serve to our customers while we're able to make the repairs onto the system. We have made efforts to reduce costs as well. We've looked at the treatment plant and provided remote monitoring, so that in order to comply with the 24/7 monitoring requirement by the state, we're now able to do that remotely. That's able to save us money in terms of the operator coming out to the site to check the system. They're able to do that remotely. We've also looked into improving the water system itself, so that when we do have problems, a line break, we're able to isolate it easier and limit the amount of downtime that occurs when those repairs are being made. We've also got a very robust community support group for this county service area. We've had a lot of help from our residents, being able to go out to monitor the area, report to us on system pressures, to distribute informational brochures to the community, and really work as a partner with Public Works to maintain and operate this system. So as I said, we are looking at a three-year rate structure, and what we intend to do, because water consumption is variable, typically when rates increase, people decrease their water usage, we'll look at that annually and work with the customer service base to make sure that the money is well-spent on operation and maintenance, and that the money that's set aside for capital is used for the highest priority capital projects. So that will be what we do moving forward, subject to approval of these rates. Again, this is the rate structure that we're recommending. It's a three-year rate structure. I know this is difficult to read, but there are a lot of other charges associated with operating a water system. We are increasing those charges as well. Those were included in the Prop 218 notice that was sent to the customers. These are fee-for-services related specifically to customers, so when those services are requested, these are the charges that we would apply to those services.
In fact, that's, it goes at one of them, could you explain what it goes from 30 to 1,500, 40 to 3,000 on the chart here?
Yeah.
Bulk rate, water permits?
Certainly.
I just don't understand that. It goes from 30, your current amount is $30, proposed amount is 1,500, current amount's 40, goes to 3,000? Is that correct?
I have a staff member here that has more information on that, and I'm going to ask our deputy director, Ms. Anne Stillman, to explain that in detail.
Anne Stillman with the County San Mateo Department of Public Works. Those rates are consistent with CSA 11 rates, and typically, we're not selling bulk water. I mean, it's a little bit different in CSA 7 because of the water rights and the adjudication. Water is tank loads of water.
So this is not to the consumers, it's to people buying a tank load?
Right. It could be to the consumers if somebody wanted to buy a tank load of water, but typically, we're not doing that with CSA 7 because of the adjudication and the water rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. That brings up a good point. Alpine Creek is an adjudicated creek, meaning that there's a limit to the amount of water that we can take out of that creek based on a court settlement for water rights in that area. So we're typically not selling that, and as Anne mentioned, we want to be consistent with our other water system, which is CSA 11. Any other questions on this slide?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Anne. The department's also looked at other ways to provide service in an attempt to reduce costs, frankly. So in looking at ways to provide this service, we can continue with the status quo. We can also look at other agencies. The Questa La Honda Guild is fairly close by, they have a water system. We can try to partner with Questa La Honda to act as a certified operator, take over full operations of the system. Another option is to provide a community service district-type scenario, where the community actually becomes responsible for the system, and they are, become the water provider. And we'd also like to look at, or we will and have looked at, having other water agencies acquire this system. That has not gained a lot of traction so far due to the remoteness and small number of connections for this system. And then we'll explore other options as they come up. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, that I can answer, that Anne Stillman can answer.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one, Mr. President. How complicated and cumbersome would it be to start trying to merge smaller water systems into larger ones and, you know, get some economies of scale?
Through the President, we've been attempting to do that with our smaller water systems and sewer systems, and it involves cooperation with the entity that wants to take it on. For water provision, the most likely folks in this area are Questa La Honda. California Water Service also has a presence on the peninsula. We made contact with them, we're still discussing it with them. And there's other smaller water providers in the area that may want to take over the system. I think it's similar to a sewer system, though, and it's similar to a city annexing unincorporated area into their city. Those people that take over these systems typically want the system in good operating condition. So when you transfer that over to whoever would take over the operations around the system, they would like the new pipes in place, and they'd like the new treatment plant upgrades and the new water tanks. So that could be a barrier moving forward.
A couple of questions. My staff gets a lot of complaints about when there's a leak in the system, that oftentimes that people then are without water for a period of time, and they, it's not that, not your fault, but I guess there aren't valves to easily shut off to be able to find that leak fairly quickly. So the other complaint I get is about the quality of water, that the taste of chemicals, and you've already talked about that. So do you actually have a schedule of capital improvements that you could, that you actually have, share with us today, or later, or at some point?
President Horsley, we have a list of capital projects, but right now, given the limited funding in that district, we're reserving everything that we can for operations and emergencies.
But if this passes, will you have sufficient fund to do any of these capital improvements?
The first-year rate adjustment simply provides adequate revenue for operations and maintenance and starting to build that fund balance. In years two and three, we should be able to start doing minor capital with those dollars. And we can report back to you with the schedule of when that would take place, depending on revenue. And again, as I mentioned, revenue is variable depending on water use. So this is a significant rate adjustment, and we expect people to conserve water. So that's going to affect the amount of revenue that we receive in this district.
Okay.
Or service area, excuse me.
Thanks. I have some public comment. First is Patricia O'Neill, followed by Heather McAvoy. Is she here? No? Oh, here we go.
My name is Patricia O'Neill, and I'm a member of the CSA 7 Customer Advisory Committee, where I serve as chairperson, and we would like to add our voices in favor of moving forward with the proposed rate increase. The better part of two years has been spent both on researching alternatives and outreach efforts to the CSA 7 community. Further delay will simply allow our fund balance to become lower, while expenses mount to respond to the various documentation requests being made, many of which are redundant. These funds need to be used on our water system, not further unnecessary paperwork. The inescapable fact is that our system is long overdue for a rate increase, which will simply achieve parity with similar small water systems. Such systems will always be challenged by their small revenue streams, yet the same Department of Public Health requirements as larger systems. I urge you to move forward with the rate increase, so we may achieve a balanced budget and focus our energies where they are needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather McAvoy, followed by Lynette Vega.
Good morning, President Horsley and Board of Supervisors and Staff. I'm the vice chair of the Customer Advisory Committee, and I echo what Patricia said, and I do believe that we are, it's timely for us to have a rate increase. I ask that the County of San Mateo, particularly the Department of Public Works, now not forget about us for 10 years again. In 1999, we passed a rate increase, and the intent of that rate increase was to build a capital fund, and now that fund is pretty much gone. So let's build it again, and then let's use it for its intended purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McAvoy. Lynette Vega, followed by Teri Adams.
To a certain degree, you've already, Supervisor Horsley has already addressed some of my concerns. Since 1976, when we, when the county first started building CS 7, our decrepit water system has been promised to be upgraded, and that hasn't really happened. And so I would like to see, I think, you know, this is kind of a bitter pill, to have like 300% of an increase over a period of these three years. I think that people who live in the area would feel a lot more comfortable about that increase if there were a definite timeline, primarily to replace smaller pipes. The piping system, at least in my tract, was built in the 20s, 1920, and also put in fire hydrants, et cetera. Also, we've been encouraged to contact the county if something goes wrong, and it's not really clear if we are being billed for those calls or emails. And there was some discussion that we are being billed for telephone calls that's coming out of our fund, and I don't know if that's true or not, but I'd like to get some clarity on that, if telephone calls, emails, and contacts are being taken out of our general And I think that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. And last is Teri Adams.
Thank you, President Horsley and the board. My name is Teri Adams. I wear several hats in this. I was the Public Works Director and On-Site Water Operator for Questa La Honda Guild for six years, retired recently from there, and now I'm employed part-time by Bracewell Engineering, being an onsite operator. I'm about five minutes away from the treatment plant. My property is surrounded by Sam McDonnell Park, so I'm a cost-saving major. I can get there a lot faster than anyone else. So I'm a customer, I'm currently an operator, and I was a voting member of the committee until I became the operator. Now I'm an ex-official member of that. I consider, I'm an active member of the community, and I want to just lend my voice to encouraging you to pass this rate increase. Even after this increase, we will not be paying as much for water as Questa La Honda Guild does, for instance, our neighbors. We need the money, we need the work being done on the system to improve it. So I lend my voice in support of what Patricia said and Heather said primarily. My only qualm or objection has to do with what Lynette said, which is, it disturbs me some that our communications and our bureaucratic process is also subtracting our funds. We're paying out of the community funding for that, for communications and stuff, apparently, and that just doesn't seem right. I don't know how the county can handle that, but I would hope you can find a way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teri. Mr. Porter, can you answer that one question? Do you bill for telephone calls? If you're an attorney, I understand it.
In deference to Mr. Byers, I will...
I can teach him how.
President Horsley, the answer to that question is yes, we do bill for administrative costs. So when we get a phone call or respond to emails, those costs are charged to the district. And the reason for that is, we, the Department of Public Works operates our utilities as enterprise funds. We have no separate source of money to offset staff costs for that. Now that being said, we have sent staff, and we've been sending staff for two years, to the Customer Advisory Committee meetings on Saturdays and not billing the customers for that. So we've tried to make advances in being able to offset costs as much as possible, but we do not have any funding source to offset our administrative costs, and those are built into the rates. And I would also add that it's similar to Cal Water or any other utility. When you call PG&E, the folks that you call bill to essentially the rates that you then pay for. So it's consistent with other utility operations.
Well, in deference to the fact that the people are being asked to raise their rates by essentially 300%, I'm going to ask you not do that. Bill for telephone calls, it seems to me that you're not adding staff, you're there And I would also like, at some point, as you said, to report back on what you have as a timeline for the capital improvements as well. Any other questions?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The pleasure of the board now.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance and adopt the resolution. Can we take those together, Mr. Byers, the ordinance and the resolution?
You may.
Okay, I'll move both of those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And thanks to all my constituents who came here, always from CSA 7 to testify.
Your working miracles. Anybody that comes and asks for, to have their rates raised, you've done a good job, Don.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the Housing Authority of the County of San Mateo, and Bill Lowell.
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the board, Mr. Malphey, Byers, and Holland. I'm pleased this morning to be able to be here and comment at the opening of this hearing on the proposed housing authority annual plan for the year starting July 113 going through June 3014. This is part of a HUD requirement that had come at a public meeting before the board. And this year's annual plan, in terms of initiatives, we've had many initiatives over the past several years as part of our MTW program. This year is a little bit lighter. A couple of the initiatives are really administrative efficiencies, but there is one significant initiative in this year's plan, and that is to expand the five-year self-sufficiency program from its current 300 vouchers to 800 vouchers. This will be done over time and as vouchers turn over. Based, the background on this is, for the past year, the county, the department has been engaged in a planning process and looking at the voucher resources that we have, the almost 4,200 vouchers, and the accompanying almost $60 million per year that support those vouchers, and trying to look again at those and make sure that we're using those in the best possible way. And one of the things that we always bump up against is that, can we deliver enough services to help people achieve self-sufficiency, economic self-sufficiency in the county? And then secondly, the vouchers, the 4,100, 4,200 vouchers... And then, secondly, the vouchers, the 4,100, 4,200 vouchers are such a precious resource that the turnover of vouchers is extremely small. And on a, in a good month, it might be 20 vouchers. And so, all the vouchers are outstanding, but basically, within the county, what we find is that the number of families that would income qualify for a voucher, if there were enough vouchers, is five times the amount of vouchers that we have. So, it's a rationed resource, and we, we deal with that, that tension of trying to reach the most people. And so, as part of this strategic review, we wanted to increase our time-limited vouchers for two reasons. One, to increase that voucher turnover over time. But secondly, what we're able to do is use some of the funding that we have to increase the service level, the effectiveness of the service level that we have for families, so that they really do have the best possible chance to achieve economic self-sufficiency. Bottom line, we want to serve more people with more effective services. In many ways, San Mateo County has become the national model for Section 8 program through our MTW program and has received recognition for that. We hope that this will continue that trend. A lot of folks are watching from around the county, from around the country, including Washington. And part of what we will be doing is making a very serious attempt at conducting good research on what happens to folks coming into this program, what happens to them over time, how, what, what is effective and what isn't as effective as it should be. And we'll probably be teaming up with the university to conduct that kind of research. And I can take any questions and comments. I would add, we've recently had two public forums in the department, so we've been talking with folks there as well.
Any questions?
Good program.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
All favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, now we have to adopt the resolution, a motion to adopt the resolution.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lowell. The next is Director's Report on Probation, Cal Remington, Director of Probation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
President Horsley, members of the Board, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Byers, and Mr. Holland. Today, I'm going to focus on, on realignment, and I think you all know it, as of April 1st, will, will hit the first year and a half, 18 months of realignment. The, the data I'll provide you today really goes through the first 15 months or the last quarter, so the end of December of 2012. I, I, I think what, what I want to do is try to give you a feel for what's going on in, in the program, and, and what you'll find is some of what I can provide today are indicators. We just, it hasn't been operating long enough to have really good data. We'll also see some areas where, where obviously it needs to be beefed up, but I think on the whole, you'll feel like, you know, in this county, anyway, realignment is, is going pretty well. So, let's get into, to year one. Year one, we had, we have, we get packets of, on the offenders who will be released from the various prisons throughout the state. So, the first, the first year, we had 429 of those, and of those, what you have to assume is that any given month, there's going to be about a third of those that, that would have come to this county because they were sentenced out of this county, but, but there's an ice hole, or they're deported, or they have warrants outstanding in other counties. So, as far as those we actually supervise, it's going to be about a third less. In year two, what you can see is that number has not really dropped. Eventually, what we're going to see is the PRCS is coming out of prison. That population is going to drop while we see the 1170Hs, the new commitments. County prison sentences will, will go up. So, when you look at, at the first three months of the beginning of the second year for realignment, again, those are, those are based on individuals that we receive packets on. About a third of those will be reduced again as far as, as supervision. But as you can see, it's not really going down yet. It's, in fact, that, those first three months are up just a, a little bit over the previous 12. The law says that in supervising these individuals, the law was set up with the presumption that counties should do a better job of supervising these individuals than previously out, out of the state. And assumptions are based on, generally for supervision, probation knows the community more, and certainly in this county, the Board has been very concerned about, about providing an adequate level of services for these individuals. So, a part of the law says, do it on evidence-based. So, the, the assessment we use is validated by the National Council of Crime and Delinquency. So, we do use that. It, it, it indicates to us the level of supervision and individual needs, the type of, of personality we're dealing with in relation to the services we provide, et cetera, et cetera. So, we are meeting the law with, with evidence-based, and we'll also, that will carry on into supervision. The, the risk to offend is, is an interesting slide, and risk to offend means that the individuals' risk of a reoffending, it doesn't mean they're, they're, they're more likely to commit a violent offense, it just means they're more likely to reoffend. And so, what you have, when you, when you look at the, the state population, our new population in green, you'll notice that about 93% of, of those individuals are moderate to high-risk, whereas when you look at the, at the county, the gold, you'll see about 79% of those are low to moderate. So, with the state population, we just don't have the, the many, many really low-risk individuals. Some of those that are most likely to reoffend, they're going to be property offenders, and they're going to be auto thieves, and, and so, again, it's, it's the likelihood to reoffend, not necessarily a, a greater risk to the community as far as violence. So, the populations, in many respects, will mirror one another, but in other respects, particularly in relation to risk, the state population is going to be a higher risk. That means we need to provide more services, we need to more, work very closely with local law enforcement and the sheriff. We're doing all that, that's working very, very well. And we need to supervise them much more closely because the risk to the community, again, is increased with that population. As far as the needs of the population, it's, again, it, it pretty much with most of those, these are the top five, and most of those will mirror our felony population, anyway. And so, what you can see is this population has a serious problem with alcohol and drug abuse, they've, they've got mental, strong mental health needs, they've got dysfunctional family situations, both from where they came and where they're going, vocational skills are low, and then criminal orientation is about 30%. Now, what does that mean? What, what we know is that for many of these individuals, when you look at those environmental factors, their personal problems, it puts them in a situation where they have a difficult time succeeding in, 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 in society. With this particular group, there's 30%, which is going to be a little higher than, than our regular population. If they didn't have those other issues, they're still very much, as far as their thinking, it's, it's a very much a criminal orientation. It's a job, it's a way of, of life. So, with that particular group, that's a hard, a harder group to, to deal with, but we, but we know we have to, to approach that, we have to try to deal with that. We use different types of cognitive therapy to help in that, in that area. But as I said, it's, most of those, those needs are going to be very similar throughout both populations. This is, is an indicator that I think is very positive. And as you can see, in the first year, we had a failures to appear. That was a fairly, a fairly high rate. We had just a little over, over three per month would, would fail to even appear at, at the probation center to begin the supervision. Absconding, we had a little over seven every month who would have come on probation, but then they, they disappear. So, when you look at the, the first three months of the second year, you'll see that the system has really kind of gotten to the point where, where we're working better with, with the prisons, they come out knowing really exactly where they should report. In the first few months of the first year, I mean, some of them were still going, reporting to parole, et cetera. So, we had less than one in those, in those first three months that failed to appear. And then, when we looked at absconding, you also see that rate was, was pretty much cut in half with just a little over three per month. So, again, I think that's an indicator that the system is reaching some more equilibrium. So, that's a positive. Flash incarceration, we can only do this, flash incarceration with this population, and we feel that it's, it's a very important tool for us. And what it really means is that, is that without going through a due process or a court hearing, we can place an individual, PRCS individual, in jail for up to 10 days. We don't have to use the whole 10 days, but we can do that on, again, it may be that we've got a problem with, with the individual on weekends, so we want to use it for, for a weekend. Maybe it's a person with severe mental health issues, we need to capture their attention, get them stabilized, and maybe a day or two in jail. But as you can see, that, that we use it with some regularity, and as I said, we see it as a, as a positive tool. Success rates, this is, these couple slides really tell us that we need to know more information. We can't give you a really good description of the success rate. The feel is that, that, that we have these offenders who are succeeding, but, but, but there's, there's a need area here, and one, we feel, will, will be met by the upcoming program of social solutions that will allow us, and that's a, a system, a software system that, that CBOs will be using, our partners will be using. It's one that came out of the CMO's office, and it's almost ready to launch. So, we'll be able to track these individuals through services, and it'll let us know which ones are doing better than the others. The other is probation needs a system where we can longitudinally track these individuals, and we can't do that now. We do have a new system, a probation case management system that will be coming online in 18 to 12, 18 to 24 months. That will be really helpful. In the meantime, if we, if we, if the Board really wants some good, some good success rates, we're probably going to have to either bring someone in or really set aside a, a number of our staff to, in essence, kind of hand count these things. So, that's a need area. This one, it says, in addition to that group I just showed you, there's another four that were successful during those October to December who had been on for over 12 months. Now, that's important because by law, we, these individuals can be released as soon as six months if they're successful, up to 12 months. We can't go on beyond 12 months unless there's some sort of, of violation. It doesn't have to be a probation revocation, flash. If someone is flashed for, for 10 days in jail, that probation period can, can be extended. So, the, the next one, I wanted to, to mention, the 1170s, and something the sheriff monks will be, monks will be getting into shortly, but, but I wanted to point out that that's the new population. In the future, I think that's going to be the primary population for counties to, to deal with. So, the fact that the sheriff is, is, is really focusing on reentry, we have a new jail being built, that's all really good because in the long run, that's going to be where, where counties, if, if they don't have that capacity, it's going to be a problem. If they do have that capacity and they've got plans as, as, as this sheriff does to deal with these individuals in the institutions, to have the space for programming, that's, that's all really, really positive. Service Connect, and that's both a combination of HSA and, and both health and, and behavioral health and human services. Those are the folks that provide the services to, to this clientele, and it's a high-need clientele. They evaluate each of these individuals, they provide everything from, from housing to job support to mental health treatment and vocational training. We really couldn't do that without them. Human Services Agency, this shows the, the numbers that they've been dealing with, with both the PRCS and the 1170 population, and as you can see, the, the date, they've, they've handled 285 individuals. So, again, we couldn't do it without their assistance. Here's some more figures. You see a total of 409 individuals that, that have been approved to date. Again, that's an important component of this. And continuing with, with those, with those stats, you see a number of, of folks are ineligible, they can be ineligible for a number of reasons. One is, is past drug convictions. If, if, if it sails, if it's serious, then they may be ineligible for a lot of these benefits. If it was possession and they went to a treatment, then, then in fact, they can overcome that obstacle and, and be eligible. So, again, there were 130 who weren't, weren't eligible. This is interesting because you can see that when you look at the health system, these two areas, both mental health services and alcohol and drug services, again, those individuals, you know, it's a high percentage that need those. So, it mirrors what our assessment says. So, when we look at this population, that is an area, those two areas are, are areas that really need attention, and again, through, through Service Connect and, and our partners were able to, to provide that. This tells you that, that when they assess these individuals, what they find is, what this, this doesn't mean those are the individuals that are receiving treatment now. Their assessment says that they have a, a need for mental health treatment, and of that need, in the past, a, a third of them have, have, have been able to receive some services, but two-thirds, a little over two-thirds haven't. That is all changing. I can't give you the real specifics, but, but if, if we talk to our partners, they'll tell, they'll tell us that, that these people are responding pretty, in a much more positive way to, to the need for these services than they have in the past. And the same is true with alcohol and drugs. You see, it's a little less than a third have received any treatment in the past, over two-thirds have not received any treatment, even though they need the help now, they needed it in the past, but they didn't get it. Legislative update, I'll end there, and then we'll talk about Jim Sacco. I think will be the one who will talk about some of the budgetary issues, but, but I do want to mention that, that we have, the, Mr. Maltby is on the Realignment Allocation Committee. I think in this county, we're happy with the existing realignment. Some counties would like to change it so they can get more, which means others get less. There's over 25 bills that have been introduced. There's, there's a lot of, depending on the county, the state is getting a lot of pushback, and, and, and they're getting more from the counties that have bigger problems meeting this demand. As I said, San Mateo County, I think particularly when you, you look to the future, is, is poised to, to, to really handle realignment in a very positive manner, in addition to the sheriff having a new jail. Probation, I'm, I'm finding, we're, we're adjusting this population, we're going to do a, a better job as time goes on. And in this county, we have courts, unlike a large percentage of the, percentage of the counties in, in, in the state are doing split sentences. We think split sentences make sense because you're less likely to clog up your jail, and, and we're finding that, that many of these individuals can benefit from, from, from supervision. So, with that, before I turn it over to Mr. Sacco, I'll entertain any questions that your, your Board may have.
Any questions? Supervisor Grub?
I, I know we've talked about this for a long while, but I'm still befuddled by why it takes 18 to 24 months to get an information system up and running.
Supervisor, I can't answer that, but I, I wish it were, it were much quicker.
Supervisor Pine?
I, one, one question. Could you just refresh my memory on, on the, the trend with the PRCS population? I mean, as you, we know at a certain point in time that, that's completed. I kind of lost track of how that trend line moves.
You know, and, and I can't give you a real good answer to that, Supervisor. I know that, that, that in this, by the end of the second year, it's, the trend is down. I, I was hoping maybe we'd see some of that going down. The, I, I also know that, that by the end of the second year, the population, when this started, the, the prison system had about, they were about 165% capacity. So, they really needed to bring that down somewhere close to 60,000. To date, that's been brought down to about 37,000. The governor recently indicated that, that really to meet all the requirements of federal judges, he would, he would probably have to loosen that criteria and, in essence, release more individuals. He's not willing to do that, and I don't think that, that, that the counties are willing... He's not willing to do that and I don't think that the counties are willing to have that occur. So whether he can get down to 105, 110 by the end of the second year, I don't think so. But certainly, from the state standpoint, this has been very successful. I mean, in 15 months, they've dropped their prison population by 37,000. They couldn't do that on their own. And now all these new commitments, a lot of these new commitments that would have gone there are staying locally. So I guess it depends where you are. If you're in the state, this is a great program. If you're county, you're still, we're still kind of seeing how this is all going to work. So I can't tell you that, answer that question now. But I think as we move on into the second year, we should get to some point where we can get some better estimates on that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could address Supervisor Grum's question regarding the system. I think the actual length of time we've been working on the system is a little over a year. And there are a number of factors that have been involved in this. It's a multi-department system, takes coordination. Although it's standalone, it has to interface with SEJIS, which is a legacy system, very difficult. We're in the process of changing that. And then the usual vetting, procurement, and getting the system up and running. I wish it could be faster. There are some unique circumstances in the system, but we're almost there. And once we're there, we think we will be able to provide the board and the public with the data that is essential for these programs. Supervisor Tessier?
Yes, Cal, thank you for the report. You had mentioned that the system won't be in place for about 18 months, but if we really wanted some of this data, you'd have to have someone in your shop basically calculate the data for us. And I just wonder, you know, I know that sounds very tedious, but in order for us to really get our arms around realignment, I almost feel like we need to do some of that. So we'll have that tracked in these years so that as you do get into the system, I don't know if you can backload things so you know where you started from, so that you build on what you have. So it would be helpful, I know we're coming to the budget time, and it might be helpful if it's possible to figure out what that might take to be able to capture as much data as possible. Because I think that's the only way we're going to have a roadmap for the future here with realignment, to see how it's actually working and also how it's impacting our facilities. I mean, we already know it's impacting our facilities, but you know, the more data we have and the more we can see about how well individuals are doing. Because I noticed if you look at the percentage of the success, I'm sort of looking at roughly, but to me, it looks like it's around 30%, 30 to 40% success rate.
You know, and I hesitate even to say that because when you look at that, the number you came to, we can come to different numbers depending on, you know, it's like a moving number. Every month, we have to start there. And then, of course, we can extend some and others get off more quickly. So I don't know. I mean, I think that 30% is...
Could you do that again? I don't know.
Yeah. But we can find out. And your question is timely in that I will be meeting with Mr. Malp tomorrow, I think, for a budget discussion. So that's something that I will add to the mix.
I guess the other question I have, you know, with Service Connect, I mean, I think they're doing a great job, but I guess if you're going, you know, again, we don't know the percentages of success, but I'd like us to drill down to see, you know, are we doing enough with Service Connect? Are there any other tools that we need to add to that toolbox to help some of these individuals that either go there and don't continue on successfully, or maybe those that aren't going at all? And what can we do to get them there?
Absolutely. And we're really counting on this social solutions software to help us with that, that will track these individuals. So that should be able to answer exactly what you're asking. Getting back to success rates, the one thing we know is that the state, over the last probably decade, has held pretty steady at about 67% to 68% failure rate. So the recidivism is very high. When we look at our population, we report to DOJ and we get information back from them. And it's, for our felony population, we have almost 60% that succeed. And so only about 40%. So that's really our goal supervisor. If we can come close, as close as that to possible with this new group, then we know that the baseline is really almost 70%. And we're convinced that we can do better than that. And when you look at the two systems, it's, there's really no reason why we can't. We have more resources, we know the resources. The state certainly doesn't have anything that we do as far as Service Connect. So we expect to get much better results. Certainly, these 1170s coming out of our local jail is going to make so much more sense than coming out of prison. They're going to get their experience, their programming in our jail will be much better and will have a better reentry to the community. So I think we're going to get better results. I just don't want to give you, you know, based on a handful of cases, we're doing that great. But we will, I will talk to Mr. Malp tomorrow about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You mentioned Jim Sacco, Cal, is he part of your presentation?
Yeah, he probably doesn't want to come up here, but just briefly, there's not a lot on the financial thing. And Jim was gracious enough to volunteer. Do you want to see the two slides we have?
You volunteered?
No, that's okay. Go to the, put me on the budget slide here, though. I will do that there.
Mr. Budget Man.
Okay, hi, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malp and Holland and Byers. Couple of things on the budget. So far, we've actually allocated a little over $10 million in this current year's budget. So you'll see that the local community fund is $13,453, and that's going to be the amount for '12, '13, and '13, '14. We don't know yet what they're going to do in '14, '15. So essentially, there's about $3.4 million that hasn't been allocated as of yet. So I wanted to make that point. The DA Private Defender Fund is money that has to go to those two departments. It's for revocation hearings. And then the, I don't believe that the CCP has met this year to decide how they're going to use the planning grant money as well. So essentially, there's about $3.6 million that hasn't been allocated if you include the CCP grant money.
I think we did do the grants. We did, but we didn't use the entire fund, if I recall correctly.
That's correct. And the strategy behind not allocating the entire amount is to give these programs an opportunity to become established, to determine what's working well, what's not working well, where some additional money might be needed, and also to provide some funding that will undoubtedly be necessary with the opening of the new jail.
Yeah, one point I want to make on the item here, the CCP planning grant money, that's money that's allocated to counties, every, depending on your size, our size gets 150,000. That's for actually doing CCP planning, which is, the grants that we issued were part of our allocation of the 10 million that we budgeted so far.
So that money is, so really, we have about $3.7 million then that's really set aside?
Technically, we actually had $2.7 million that we rolled over from last year. So our year-end projected reserve balance is about $6.3 million.
Yes, is the answer to that question?
I guess yes, but it's, we even have more than that.
Is that budget dust or something? Is the planning grant, is that an annual grant or is that, it's a one-time?
We got it one-time in '11, '12, and one-time in '12, '13.
That's a two-time grant.
It looks like it's, that's, Tony's saying that's it.
Okay.
So it's one-time, two-times. The other, this next chart kind of shows how the allocations are made based on a percentage basis. Again, these percentages are based on the $10,050,000, not the $13 million. I can just go through the underlying numbers really quick for you. $3.1 million was allocated to the sheriff's office. That money has been allocated, but it hasn't been spent yet. There's $2 million or 20% for probation, $1.6 million for HSA, $1.3 million for the health system, $1 million for the competitive grant program, $500,000 for program evaluation, and then $416,000 for staff training and contingency appropriation. This budget is consistent with the local implementation plan that was adopted. Basically, these are the funds that were needed to support the plan as approved. So that's kind of what I was going to say. If you have any questions about the budget or...
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Thank, yes?
Can I just make a request, Cal? Can you provide your slides for us? I mean, I think that's good information when people ask us what's happening. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for that report. Thanks, Cal and Jim. The next one, item number seven, is the sheriff's office, Sheriff Greg Monks.
President Horsley, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers, Mr. Holland, welcome back, Mr. Holland. Good to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you our Program Service and Reentry Programming Strategic Implementation Plan. So as you might recall, during this jail replacement project, I have often stated that the project really isn't about just building a replacement jail, it's about changing how we do corrections here in San Mateo County. And the plan that we are working on that is, we're going to update you on today, is a major part of that. It's taking a look at how we manage our correction system from the day someone enters to the day that they leave. And we, during the CCP process, I got a chance to see RDA, Research Development Associates up close. They helped to bring a real strategic perspective to what was a very difficult process. So we later brought them on board to help us in this process. I'd like to acknowledge the work of Supervisor Tessier and former Supervisor Rose Jacobs-Gibson and now Supervisor Slocum for their work on this project. The goals, what we're trying to achieve is we want to take a look at our current system. We want to work with the current system challenges that we have with our outdated and overcrowded women's facility and our overcrowded men's facility, but also take a look at the new replacement facility and how we're going to operate that system. We want to be able to deliver a broad array of programs that are evidence-based, that we'll talk about in a minute, provide a supportive adult learning environment, and then stand up a continuum of care model through assessment, case management, custom curriculum, reentry, and transition planning. So again, we'll get into that here in a minute. This effort has involved the work of many, many people, many of our county partners, many of our community-based organizations, stakeholders, and several people are here today from that effort. I'd like to ask them to stand, the folks that took part in our meetings. Thank you, everybody. And so I'm going to introduce Diana Sanders and Roberta Chambers from RDA and Associates. They're going to walk us through the update, where we are at this point. And then, once you hear from them, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Monks. Good morning to the Board of Supervisors, President Horsley, and the County Manager's Office. As the sheriff said, we have spent the better part of the last year working collaboratively with representatives from all walks of the county, and that included inmates and ex-inmates as well. We went out of our way to make sure that we put together a very inclusive group of people in doing this work, and that was the sheriff's request. So we have some names up here. You've just stood, I won't ask you to stand again. And the larger group of subcommittee members, all of whom really worked hard to contribute their best ideas. And we've taken the liberty of putting them all together in a plan, which is what we're going to summarize for you today. The overview of the project was pretty straightforward. We really wanted to make sure that we improved the services that exist, build on those to create stronger programs and services within the jail, and where possible, to use evidence-based practices to guide that process. There's a lot of work being done on programs and services within jails, and we had the opportunity to do a fair amount of research to uncover those that might work in San Mateo County. Our approach, as I said, was inclusive. We wanted to rely on the existing expertise in the county and then look beyond that where we needed to. We conducted interviews, benchmarking interviews with a number of counties in the surrounding area to see what they were doing and whether or not that was going to be relevant for the county. We did a lot of research about evidence-based practices, and we'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes. And we, together with the subcommittees, identified the existing gaps in the current system. The considerations were to really be able to leverage the existing resources to make room for the new inmates as a result of AB 109, and to continue to serve the existing inmates as well. We wanted to make sure, again, one of the sheriff's priorities is always about the safety of everyone involved. And we wanted to link programs and services to the inmates' needs, something that has been done on some level, but not to the extent that the county participants envisioned for this project. And, excuse me, another key to the process was to look at how we could link services to support the reentry of inmates when they left the jail. In our research about evidence-based practices, and I'm sorry, I always forget I'm supposed to be the one pushing the button. Excuse me. We did a lot of research and discovered that there are some really three main areas to focus on. And those fall under the headings, or they're categorized as reformative programming, activity-based programming, and reintegrative or reentry programming. And as their names insinuate, the reformative is about teaching skills and behaviors and increasing knowledge. The activities are about changing behavior so that people are less likely to sit around doing nothing and more likely to use their time constructively. And the reintegration and reentry, of course, is that really critical time when people leave the jail and find their way back into the community. It is the integration of those three areas that makes the process work best, is what the evidence points to. And so an appropriate mix of those three types of programming is really important for the success of the project. Excuse me, I'm sorry if I sound a little hoarse. We've got some programs listed here in each of the categories. All of these are evidence-based practices or programs. Some of them exist in San Mateo to some degree, some do not, but exist in surrounding counties. The first task for this broad group, I would say there are about 55 people involved in a series of subcommittees. The first task was to identify where the gaps lay. It was important for us to understand what San Mateo could offer currently, what was missing, what the new jail was going to look like, and how we could work to fill those gaps to better serve the community. So we've highlighted a few of the gaps that were most prevalent throughout the system. And they include, of course, the comprehensive risk needs assessment. So let me talk about this for just a second. There is a risk assessment that's done to classify inmates in terms of determining housing. That's done for everyone who enters the jail. What became clear once we looked at the gaps that the subcommittees identified was that none of the interviews or assessments really allowed staff at the jail to understand the needs, the programming needs, the health needs, and any of the services that are provided, those kinds of needs. And so, excuse me, and I don't want to say that there was only a, let me just double back again. There is, of course, an immediate mental health screening done as soon as people enter the jail to identify any emergent needs as soon as possible. But so, from all of the subcommittees, what we heard was, we need to know who needs our services. We need to know who needs this kind of programming. We need to know what people already have and where they can go from there, how they can build on what they already know. So, excuse me, that was one of the biggest gaps that was identified. The second one was that there's really no intake-to-release case management in place. There is a... There is a multidisciplinary team that's made up of a cross-section of county staff, but it only kicks in towards the end of an inmate's stay in preparation for release. And so what began to emerge was this idea of case management being offered to inmates at the time that that initial program and service needs assessment is done, so that there's a guide in place and a plan developed for the inmate's journey. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job.
So that there is a plan in place and goals set for each inmate along their journeys through the jail. We talked about linkages between inmates and post-release community service providers. As you've mentioned, Service Connect certainly does a great job, but there are additional needs that could be met, and we'll get into some of those. Roberta will get into some of those as we talk about the specific strategies. We wanted to make sure, and I say "we" meaning all 55 subcommittee members, the sheriff's office and RDA really wanted to make sure that there was the right integration of reform, activity-based programming, and reentry services available, and that the idea of rigorous ongoing program development and evaluation was put in place. So I think I'm going to turn it over to you for a minute while I-
Can I have the clicker?
Yes, sorry.
Good morning. Dr. Roberta Chambers from RDA, President Horsley, supervisors and county manager and council. I'm going to talk with you about the actual strategies that were developed as a result of the plan. So based on what Diana just shared about the process, we separated the strategies into five domains, the first one being intake, the second one being the risk and service needs assessment, the third one being case management, the fourth in custody programming, and the fifth, reentry and transition planning. And those map directly back to the gaps that were identified through the needs assessment and gap analysis that Diana just summarized. So for the intake strategies, the first strategy that emerged was the need to conduct mental health and medical screenings for all persons taken into custody, and this was really to enhance the emergencies and urgent screenings that were already being done. In working with correctional health and the mental health and health subcommittee, what came up is they're actually in the process of implementing an electronic medical record, which has all of the validated assessments and standard protocols and clinical protocols that will actually do that, and this meets the highest level of accreditation through the NCHC. So that strategy, through the course of this process, actually ended up being, is in process sooner, which is fantastic. The next two strategies really are meant to establish the foundation of two practices that are already happening, and again, are really to establish the first step in the process. The rest of the strategies do continue sequentially of the flow of an inmate through the jail. So that is to conduct a security risk classification screening and then to place inmates in initial housing based on that risk classification screening that is already currently in place and has been. Oops, did I, okay. This then, this next set of strategies, the risk and service needs assessment strategies, is where you begin to see the first change or the first recommended enhancement. And so in this, this is for all inmates within seven days of initial intake to conduct a risk and service needs assessment. And what the purpose of this assessment is to identify not just what their security and security needs are, but also what their service needs are, with the idea that the strategies coming up will then link programs to identified needs. So previously, it's been that inmates had access to programs and services that were available in their housing unit, which was based solely on their housing unit assignment, really based on their risk and classification screenings. And so this then provides an additional set of information for that. The next strategy is to deliver information on a variety of programs on intake, housing, and reentry, so that people really, inmates, have information about all of the programs that may be available to them, and then to place inmates on housing based on not just their security needs, which of course are primary, but also on their assessed service needs. So if there's a choice of where somebody can go, that they'd be able to go somewhere where the services that mapped to their needs assessment were available. For case management, this is one of the things that emerged through the gap analysis that the sheriff and the committee were very interested in, and this is that any interested inmate will be assigned a case manager who could act as a facilitator throughout the process. And one of the first things with case management would be to develop an individualized case plan, so that person was able to select the services based on what their identified needs were, and then have somebody work with them and continue to help them motivate themselves to participate in those services. And then so they would have regular follow-up meetings. For people who chose not to select a case manager, because participation in case management will be optional, for people who chose not to engage in case management, they would still have access to the full range of in-custody programming. So the next set of strategies is around in-custody programming. The first strategy is to develop a series of programs and schedules that ensure that each housing pod offer a mixture of the reform activity and reentry-based programming, and then to incentivize program participation in the different ways that that can happen in a correctional environment. And then the third strategy, which is difficult in the current jail facility, but I hear it will be a little bit easier in the new facility, is to establish a process whereby inmates can petition their case managers and then to the correctional staff to participate in programming that is not available in their current housing assignment, so that they will be able to participate outside of that based on their needs and request. The, excuse me, the last set of strategies is around the reentry and transition planning. The first one is, and this really does all, kind of the thread of this is the case management component, so to assess inmates for post-release service needs and using the MDT as a way to facilitate those linkages, and then assess and support inmates for post-release financial obligations, including child support, restitution, court fees, those sorts of things, assess them for entitlement eligibility, and hopefully, where possible, start that process pre-release, and then work to identify and come up with what the plan is for inmates as they're being released, pre-release, and to really create those linkages wherever possible before they are released. I think I'm handing it back to Diana to talk about timelines and next steps.
Do we have handouts of those who don't?
No.
Okay. Well, maybe, why don't I just speak to them and then I'll pass them around? So these, do you have these? Can you read them is really the question. We squeezed as much information as we could, and maybe, I don't know if anyone can see this. Roberta, do you want to hold that? Okay. So the initial thing we did, and I'm sorry we didn't bring it for comparison, but initially we created a process flow chart, once we understood the system that works in the jail. So it followed an inmate from entry all the way through their time in jail. What we did this time was to create kind of a comparison chart. So you have programs that exist, programs and services that exist, and then the new strategies and the programs and services that'll be included in that, so that you can see both easily. They may not be in the exact order that they happen, but it seemed like a better way, and I don't know if you want to pass that around. The second document, which is even harder to read, is a timeline over the next three years, so from 2013 through 2015, and it is the way that the plan, the way that RDA, based on the information that we got and what we've, how we've worked with the community, it is how we understand the priorities. And so on the charts you see, you'll see that one of the first things to happen is a whole decision-making process, so that all of the recommendations made by the subcommittees will be considered by the sheriff's steering committee, on which a couple of the Board of Supervisors members participate, and then they'll be joined by advisory committees who will bring expertise in each of the areas that decisions have to be made, so that they're really solid decisions made based on San Mateo County needs and the expertise of local staff people, as well as needed to draw from surrounding counties or other areas in the country that have done this kind of process before. So overall, to make it a lot easier for everyone to read, we put together this implementation timeline overview, and you can see pretty much what I just talked about. The implementation process will go through the three years. There's a key to putting something like this in place, and it is RDA's experience in working with multiple counties throughout the state of California, in everything from mental health to criminal justice, that communication is key to making a project like this work. Everyone that's involved, everyone that's going to be subject to changing something, community stakeholders need to know what's going on in order to be able to fully support the process. So we have put that as an ongoing effort as well. The risk service needs assessment, which will be conducted within the first seven days of an inmate being within the jail, will happen concurrently with the case management process being identified and then implemented. And we will begin the work of creating an evaluation plan, so that as we go into year two, we can evaluate the current programs, and by year three, as programs begin to roll out, we'll be able to evaluate those from the very beginning. In-custody programming and reentry and transition will both be addressed in the second year, and that'll roll into the third year as we roll those programs out. Any questions about that before I go on to the next step?
I'd like to ask one back on page six of the handout. Interested inmates are assigned case managers, but you said it was optional?
Yeah.
Why is it optional?
Well, you know, we did a lot of interviews in the jail. We interviewed about 30 people, and what we learned is that some people are there to do their time and they're not going to do anything else. And in an effort to maximize the opportunities for people who really want to take advantage, it seemed like, you know, after discussion among the group, that making that optional would start off with the people who really are motivated to change, support them in their efforts. And I would have to say that if that works over time, more and more people will choose it. Sure.
Actually, based on that, would it be possible for the judges, when they actually sentence someone, to make that part of their sentence, that, you know, they get out sooner, sort of that incentivized opportunity?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Through the chair. One of the great programs or one of the really effective tools that we have currently is working with probation on these modifiable sentences. So this would be a great example where, you know, with modified sentencing and working closely with probation, because probation's a key partner through this whole process, but to have probation officers part of that MDT and making eligibility for a modified sentence conditional on accepting and, you know, really engaging in this process would be, I think, real effective.
You know, I think the other thing that we talked about doing was, in order to get a better sense of the real characteristics of the current inmates, is to do a brief survey process with inmates, just to assess their experience in mental health, in trauma, those that are veterans, those that have been victims or perpetrators of domestic violence, educational history, vocational training, so that as the sheriff's committees start making decisions about programming, we can really prioritize based on what appears to be the need. And so we'll start with creating the steering and advisory committees. The steering committee's already formed. The advisory committees have yet to be formed. And then the sheriff's office staff will work with the advisory committee members to identify and recruit work groups. So the steering committee and the advisory committees will be the decision-making bodies, and then the work groups will also have a role in providing recommendations, but they will be more the implementers of the process. So right after those committees are formed, RDA will go in and put together a survey for the current inmates to really assess those experiences, capture them as a baseline, and work from there. And then as the committee and work group meetings continue, they'll begin to make decisions based on whether or not the case management system that's working in some other county would work here, or do we design something that's more appropriate for San Mateo? How will that work? What will that look like? What are the needs? And that will move into implementation at the same time that we're doing similar work around the risk and service needs assessment. And that was a little tricky in the sense that we're talking about providing that assessment for all inmates, those who have been sentenced and those who have not. And so that's kind of a new area to explore, and it may require a little bit more research and take a little bit more time to come up with the right assessment tool or to create a new one. Any other questions? Yes.
Happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Just one question. I mean, as always, you look at the timeline and, you know, as we look here, nine to 15 months before, you know, case management and the needs assessment implementation plans really in the works, is it possible to take a look at some of the programs we currently do and expand on them or try some pilot programs in the meantime to get more people involved? I know it's, we've got a real tough situation, I know, with the women's facility with the overcrowding, more so than Maguire, but, you know, three years or two and a half years from now, I'd like to see us be able to implement some things and get more people doing things today rather than waiting. I know a lot of this really needs to take place to really do it absolutely correctly, but is there a possibility?
Yes, we are, you know, constantly looking for opportunities to expand programming under the current conditions. As you know, the challenges are, you know, you heard Mr. Remington's report on realignment. That has had a significant impact on our facilities. Our female population is up significantly. I think it's up close to 40% since the beginning of realignment. So that facility, that's rated for 84 inmates, is, we, last week, I think, had 140 women in custody, not all at WCC, but various nooks and crannies around the system. And we have zero program space in that facility. So what we can offer through the women's transitional program, we look to expand. We had a delegation went last week to look at some education programs in San Francisco, which looked like, you know, great programming. The space that they have up at that San Bruno jail is pretty impressive, something that we hope to replicate in our new facility. And then with our Maguire, our main men's jail, as you know, we had to shut down one of our Choices pods to create a special housing unit for disciplinary problems because of the kind of hardening of our population as a result of realignment. So that being said, we are anxious and interested in looking at opportunities to pilot new things. We've been expanding our use of electronic monitoring in conjunction with programming, so we're getting more people out of the facilities into community-based activities and programming with, in conjunction with electronic monitoring. I see opportunities to expand in that area. We are working with the mental health partners to look at some piloting of, looking at low-level offenders that, this is not pathways. Pathways, as you know, is for people that are convicted and then later put into treatment as a condition of their probation, but we're looking at some low-level offenses that might be able to, pre-trial, be put into, if they have a community-based plan already, if they have a community-based support network already, that rather than keep them in custody, that we can transition them out of custody, that might- that might also be done in conjunction with electronic monitoring. So, but the other area that I think that we can move forward more quickly on is in this case management area. I think that there's opportunities there that we don't need to wait for the whole process to move forward, that we can start looking at that and looking at beginning a process like that so that we can make best use of those programs that we do have. But yes, we will continue to look for opportunities to either pilot programming that maybe we can expand with the onset of the new facility and/or, you know, take advantage of, you know, what space that we do have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Fine?
Yes. Well, first, thank you, Sheriff Monks and Supervisor Tissie and everyone here in the room that's worked so hard on this. It's really, a lot of work has gone into it. I mean, I got the whole copy of the report and making my way through it. I mean, certainly if we're going to have a state-of-the-art jail, you know, we should have state-of-the-art programming, and this is, you know, a good step in that direction. You know, I'm particularly interested in the issue of assessment, which I've spoken with folks about in the past. And, you know, I think that is just a critical step to, you know, figure out what the individual's needs are and then detract them in the way you discussed. You know, one thing I noticed in the report itself, you may note that, you know, through this assessment process, that the sheriff office could gain insight into the needs of the pretrial detention population, which could be used to the court and the criminal justice. And it was suggested that the sheriff office work with San Mateo County Pretrial Services and the probation department to identify areas where assessment might also be relevant for pretrial planning. I couldn't agree more strongly with that thought. It might require some tweaking in when you do the assessment, but that could be very valuable information, of course, for the judiciary. So I was pleased to see that point made in the report. And I assume also that this information will be easily portable to the probation department, you know, as when the individuals leave custody? Is that the case? I mean, it just kind of, everyone will be able to get at it, right?
Yeah. Probation is key throughout this process. I mean, they're going to be side by side with us throughout the process. They're really kind of the gatekeepers, so to speak, as these folks get out. They're going to be handed off, in many cases, in most cases, to probation for supervision. So the MDT process where we envision the case manager, whoever the other partner might be, if it's a mental health situation, whether it's a drug and alcohol, whatever that other, those other needs, those partners may come and go depending on the needs of the client. Probation I would envision being present in all cases, since they're the ones that either make the decision whether the person's going to be coming out on a modified sentence or they need to be intimately involved in crafting, you know, the conditions for success while they're getting ready to be released. So, yeah, we expect, and probation's been a very active and supportive partner throughout this process, so they're very much involved.
And do you need to procure new software to, you're going to have a lot of data through this assessment process that, again, you want a lot of people to access. Do you need new software for that, or do we already have the tools for that?
Well, so, back to the data thing, the challenge. I think the county manager said it very accurately. What's going on is, you know, there's all these moving parts moving toward a new kind of environment. So we are all continuing to be a part of and maintain CEGIS. But as the DA, probation, we, the sheriff, and others get our own independent systems, we're all going to be migrating towards this middleware.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
So this is all part of the same?
Yeah. But we do have, and with the support of the CCP and the county manager, we did add an analyst in our jail classification unit for AB 109. So we do have some expanded and enhanced data collection capabilities currently. And we have a report that we put out that kind of manages and tracks the in custody portion of that AB 109 population. So, but no, I think we'll be able to, given the direction that all the different departments are going on, we will be in a better position to provide and to analyze that kind of data.
It sounds like, like everyone else, you have this short-term, well, short to medium-term challenge. And I think, yeah, I think that point's been made is that, you know, if it really is going to take 18 to 24 months, we got to figure out some interim way of making best use of this information, because it's, we're going to have a lot, we'll be collecting a lot of information that's very helpful. And then finally, could you just elaborate a little bit more on what you were saying about your expanded use of electronic monitoring? I didn't quite follow in what setting you're using that.
We are using it in conjunction with sentence, our sentence population?
Sentence population.
As we get them out of custody to go either to job train, to work, you know, work release, to community-based programming. So that's where we're using it.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Malp, Mr. Holland, and Council Byers. I am Joan Rosas. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services in the County Office of Education, and I was asked to chair the Education Committee. And one of my teammates is here today, Barbara Colly from Notre Dame. So I'm glad to see you. Thank you for coming. Project REED, San Mateo County Office of Ed, Step Through Notre Dame, Kenyatta College, and other educational organizations are very excited about this new plan. And we believe that education is a key aspect of an adult's transition into the mainstream population, their ability to attain employment and to avoid recidivism. So we believe that this plan includes a thorough assessment within seven days, a case management approach, and a curriculum, a custom curriculum, which will leverage the different organizations within our community to provide these educational opportunities. In particular, options will include, for our inmates, will include the ability to improve their literacy skills, pass the GED if needed, and move into a series of seminars, and this part is quite new, a series of seminars geared to supporting vocational and educational pursuits. And these include personal finance, academic advising, and educational financial funding in order to go to college. These will be provided through Notre Dame and our community colleges. So we encourage you to support these strategies in the plan and to, and especially since this is such a responsive educational plan for our inmates. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think Mr. Paxton?
Phew, get it back to you. Good morning, President Horsley, members of the board, Mr. Malp, Mr. Holland, Council Byers. I am Scott Payton, the current reentry coordinator for Achieve 180. I'm here to remind you of the strengths of our Achieve 180 program and emphasize that recommendations in the sheriff's strategic implementation plan reinforce what we are doing to promote on a broader scale our successful countywide case management reentry model. As you know, while overall local recidivism has been estimated between 60 and 70%, recidivism for Achieve 180 participants has been 38%, with much of that for technical violations and very short jail stays. For outcomes like this, we rely upon strong partnerships among county departments like probation, the sheriff's office, human services, correctional health, and behavioral health and recovery services. In addition, active relationships with our community partners like the Service League, Job Train, and our substance treatment providers are a formula for success both in Achieve 180 and in the sheriff's strategic implementation plan. To keep our county's residents from returning to jail, it is vitally important that supervision, safety, and security concerns be supported through seamless coordination with a continuum of care from booking through custodial stay and transition back into the community. With appropriate support services, a case management approach improves opportunities for participant success in both Achieve 180 and the sheriff's strategic implementation plan. The sheriff's plan before you offers strong interagency partnership in policy, administration, and operations, such as we have seen through Achieve 180 and more recently with Service Connect. I would like to thank the board and the county manager for their full support of Achieve 180 over the past four years. And as we craft the next generation of reentry programming with our key partners and stakeholders, I would ask you to support the sheriff's strategic implementation plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Karen Fronte, Coney, followed by Caroline Bracco.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, supervisors, county manager Malp, and the rest of the assistant and council. I'm not going to go on for very long, because I see a lot of glossy eyes out in the audience there, and it's been a long morning. I had a lot to say, but RDA, the sheriff, and the other speakers really covered it all. As a stakeholder and a partner of our great sheriff's department, our county, Achieve 180, and all the programs that probation and everybody does together, I'm really in support of this exciting program. I think with the past 23-plus years I've been with the Service League, by the way, I'm the interim executive director, and very excited about this possibility of all of these programs. We've been going into the jail and doing programs inside the jail, post-release, out in the community with alcohol and other drug programs and housing. And this is just the formula that we need inside the jail to have a start, starting point, to have people getting excited about treatment, to get that groundwork done. We need the hammer of the judges, I agree with you. They need to give them incentives to be in those programs, and then when they're released, they have a solid plan and a start and a foundation that they need in treatment. When Achieve 180 started, we were asked to do the case management and to do the mentorship programming. It's really a program that supports the individual and builds that rapport from the beginning and carries them out. So I can't see this going wrong with all of the groundwork that's already been done, with the planning and the excellent county direction. So I'm all in support of it. I hope to be a partner, to continue to be a partner, you know, inside doing some of these programs that we've already been providing and to build on that. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Karen. Caroline Bracco, followed by Martin Fox.
Members of the board and the county managers, thank you for your service and thank you for having me today. I'm here on behalf of the San Mateo County Law Library. Our director, Andrew Garthick, could not be here today, but I am here on his behalf. And I just wanted to kind of jump on board with everybody else. Supervisor Tissie had mentioned a toolkit for some of these parolees, and the law library is implementing already a program of training people and explaining how to deal with record expungement, which will then allow them better access and reentry into the workforce as well as our community. This past month, we had a lecture on expungement, which was very well-attended, about 60 people. Additionally, we got phone calls, they want more. So we're going to be having another lecture this upcoming month. And hopefully, this will be an ongoing program that will be able to support both the sheriff's department and the probation department. So thank you for your time and just keep us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Martin Fox, followed by Diane Prosser.
Thank you again for your service, Honorable President and members of the board, and thank you too. I really appreciate it, Sheriff Monks, recognizing that all of these inmates are going to be back in our community at some point in time is the foundation that I think we can all agree on and build on. And that includes veterans. They've had training, they know how to follow orders. Let's build on that. I think the modified sentences is a good approach. I think it's a very good approach. I would suggest that we ask the judiciary to institute another approach, or at least consider non-statutory conditional dismissals. I have seen it work in other counties, and it's been very effective in getting case management compliance on an out-of-custody basis. And I mentioned it to one of the honorable judges who participated in the Evidence-Based Practices Conference, and he said they would consider it. So there's some ground there that I think can really benefit the county, and I'd wish that when you endorse the sheriff's efforts here, you include that as a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Prosser, followed by Debbie Torres.
My name is Diane Prosser, and thank you for President Horsley and Malp and the management staff. I was pulled into this program about five years ago with Debbie Bazan. My background is 40 years of medical model rehabilitation. And after working with Debbie at the hospital, the idea and the reality that hospitals and jails are incredibly alike, and the concept of rehabilitation, the medical model, can be applied and can be strengthened with the whole concept. In the hospital, we bring somebody in, we see what their needs are, we see what their opportunities or the potentials are, and then it's a string through, making sure that they get what they need. This is exactly the same program or the same concept, I should say, that Sheriff Monks and the groups that I've been enjoying working with so much, this is the same thing. And so it's exciting to me. I think we're going to be cutting edge. It's also exciting to me, I was originally on the jail planning advisory committee, and there we're talking about bricks and mortar and how to build. The other program committee, the programming committee, which I'm on, pulls that together in terms of, here's the program, and then do we have the right facilities in order to pull that together? And then, of course, the most exciting thing is, then when that's done, then there's the community out there, ready and able and willing to work. So that concept of thread, as I said, is exciting to me, because my background was medical model rehab. So I think this county is very, very fortunate to have the leadership and the creativity that's involved, and I'm excited to be a part of it and certainly hope that you all support with 99.9% of your body. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Deborah Torres, final speaker.
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the board, county manager, county council, assistant county manager. I'm Deborah Torres with the Human Services Agency, Director of Collaborative Community Outcomes, and was fortunate to be a co-chair of one of the subcommittees along with Mike Nevin, who brought tremendous years of experience to the Socialization, Reentry, and Family Reunification Committee. So, Human Services Agency was pleased to be a part of the planning process of this, both on the reentry side as well as the employment services. We had staff from our Vocational Rehab Division as well, services within the agency to provide their area of expertise. So we very much supported the involvement and the recognition of the importance of case management, the importance of involving families early on. I'm also here to talk a little bit and just support the Service Connect model, which we know it's a very intensive model for a very limited population under AB 109. But we have seen the work through Service Connect where individuals formerly who did not access services and were reluctant to get services when they were engaged, and there was outreach, and there was case management, and there were groups, and there was follow-up, that there were changes that occurred. And with Service Connect now, we have individuals who come to our doors and some of the events who are not AB 109 individuals, and they say, I wish we were AB 109 so we could access some of those services. So when we have individuals saying that, yes, they would like those array of services, then we know that there's potential for change of individuals. So again, we support the approaches, really looking at, from the point of entry, to the array of services and following individuals, because we do believe in the rehabilitation of formerly incarcerated individuals, and we have seen the successes to date. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Adrian?
I just want to make a couple comments. One of my colleagues talked about the speed with which we're going to be able to do data collection. I just want to say I'm now in my ninth year working on jail overcrowding, and I really want to say this is a great, great moment. I mean, we have, we're right on the cutting edge of having a new facility, and to me, this is everything we talked about from day one. How can we do things differently in this county? And I just want to commend the sheriff for being really open to wanting to do something different, knowing that change won't happen if we continue to do the same thing over and over again. So I want to say this plan, thanks to RDA and the incredible So I want to say this plan, thanks to RDA and the incredible stakeholders that we've had here at the county. I mean, this, the body of people that came together to put this plan together were very, very interested in making our county pretty much on the cutting edge of how we're going to do business and hopefully to be the model for other counties as we move forward with realignment and we look at the overcrowding situation in other areas. So sheriff, I just want to commend you for really being open, and same with Trish. I mean, this is an incredible plan, and it really, I think, will take us, you know, into the next several decades with something very valuable here, a very valuable tool. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for mentioning, Assistant Sheriff, Tricia Sanchez, who's really been the point person on this project and has done a lot of heavy lifting, so thank you.
Supervisor Slough, have you had anything? Or Supervisor Grum? Wait a second. Supervisor Grum?
I just think it's also terrific and can think that the people that we end up, the people that end up joining us will be much better off after they've gone through this, all of these new, these new programs you're putting in place, especially the initial assessment. I think that's going to be a great tool.
Okay, Supervisor Pine.
Just echoing Supervisor Tissier's comments, you know, I always find Trish Sanchez and the other staff members to be really helpful in educating me about how this all works.
Thank you.
Well, I was just going to make one quick comment. You're talking about ninth year on the jail. I've spent about 20 years on CEGIS, and it's still not there. Or maybe 12 years, but it was a long time.
A long time.
And I think I've made it's kind of a priority of getting that system done so that you get the kind of information that you really need, especially when asked by us to give reports on things like recidivism. But I do want to commend you for leadership and creativity, and, you know, Mike Nevin, I actually, I miss him a lot of times. I think of him striding down the street, or, you know, I'm on the Board of Supervisors, and I'm sure he would have been proud of this plan. And I have to say that I'm proud of what you've done as well. So thanks for your report.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the sheriff's office report. And now it's the county manager on Measure A Plan.
The board report before you lists the Measure A projects that have been previously discussed by the board. They have been grouped into categories, and we have added additional categories so that each of the groupings of these proposals that the board has talked about at previous meetings will be considered as part of a package so that you could clearly see what need is being addressed, what gap is being filled. We've included in this report to you the various elements of information that will be included in each of those reports. We've added a timeline to that, as well as a listing of the initiatives in those categories. It's our intention, as the board begins to receive these reports beginning next month, that if the board indicates that they agree with the recommendations of the report or modifies the recommendations and wants to keep that item before the board for further consideration in the budget, that those items will be grouped as part of a Measure A packet in the budget for your final review, approval, or modification, and then, of course, be incorporated into the working budget for the next two fiscal years. So if the board has any questions or comments, please feel free to ask. Oh, I did, I did have one additional thing I wanted to say. There is one change in that list of categories. On page two, in the middle of the page, youth and mental health services, we indicate in number sub-three, mental health services at schools, that really should identify, most of the work there will be done around the middle school age for the kids that are, tend to be most vulnerable in and around that age grouping. So that's where the target of those services is intended to be provided.
That was the training for teachers and families, as called.
It's very broad. That's part of it, yes.
I got it. Okay. Any comments?
Just one comment. I think it may or may not be just the middle school that may come out of this, but, you know, the Violence Summit that's taking place at the end of April, you know, we're really looking at, you know, the elementary schools as well and seeing, looking at prevention and early intervention around the health services as well. So that may be a piece that may get, I may want to ask if we can fold in, you know, some of the results. I think what's going to happen after that summit is that there may be a task force put together, well, probably three task forces. One, that's going to deal with law enforcement and their, their interaction with schools should something happen. The second one is around mental health services and how we, together with the schools, enhance what we're currently doing. And the third one is information sharing. So there may be several components that may come back or at least be a task force to work on areas where we can really improve. So I realize this is around the middle school, but there may be something that may come back, at least as an action on a task force.
And through the president to Supervisor Tissier, one of the things that we really haven't talked about at this point in terms of the actual allocation process of Measure A is that in many of these cases, these are meeting needs and gaps in completely new ways with new approaches. And we may well find, as we go through that process, that some things aren't working and we shouldn't do them, but some things are working very well and may need more resources. And so I think in the allocation process, we should keep that in mind, that this is an evolving process. And so perhaps not allocate all the Measure A money in the first or the second year, just for the sort of thing that this is going to be evolving, and we may find new needs as we go through this process.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Pine?
Yeah, I think the point that Mr. Malpe made is an important one. Some of the things on this list are any more crystallized, I think, than others at the time they come to us. And so, you know, we may not be ready to make a funding commitment now, but could be next year or six months from now. So, and then, of course, as we know in this business, there's always the unanticipated needs. So I think those are good things to keep in mind. So I just had, I guess, one question. So I see that the Seton Medical Center is coming to us on the 21st, and could you give a sense for kind of where you think we'll be in that process with Seton by that time?
Well, we're going to have a meeting this afternoon with Seton representatives, and if you ask me that question at our meeting later this afternoon, I might be able to give you a better answer.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking that is it the goal to, is, or maybe we're just not in a position to talk about it right now, but, I mean, at some point in time, we have to have a substantial contract now with Seton, and I know people are working on that.
There's a draft contract on the table for discussion between us and Seton. Depending how the discussions go this afternoon, it may be ready to bring back to the board, or we may be quite a ways apart.
Thank you. I just have one speaker on this, Martin Fox.
I will be brief. Where there is suffering, there is duty. From duty fulfilled, comes grace. Healing, health, and hope comes from the grace of a duty fulfilled. Healing, health, and hope for persons living with mental illness who lack the capacity needed to seek treatment voluntarily is possible with Laura's Law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marty. As board members' reports, do we have any Supervisor Grum?
Thanks. Thank you, President Horsley, and please bear with me. I have sad news to report on several fronts here. I would ask us to adjourn in memory of Jim Erickson, who was the city manager in Millbrae for 22 years, had a 40-year career in public service. And he was, he was just not a city manager. He was an integral part of Millbrae. He was at the ballgames, and he was at the schools, and he was at the Rotary Club, and he just, he was just such a part of Millbrae. And when he left to go off to Benicia, it was, I think, the people in that part of the county, especially, I worked with them a great deal when I was at Mills Peninsula, and I just felt a real sadness when he left our community. And now he's died at a very untimely death. He was born in 1945 and died in March 12th of 2013. So I hope that we would remember him. I'd also like us to adjourn in memory of Leo Frechette, who was the father of Maureen Frechette, councilwoman in San Mateo. He also was an integral part of the San Mateo community for many, many years, born in 1927 and just passed away this year. His family will miss him deeply. And lastly, Ed Johnson, who was a 60-year resident of San Mateo, a banker known to many, longtime Wells Fargo banker in downtown, downtown, a member of the Rotary, Rotary Club, longtime member of advisories to school boards and city, and city government whenever they wanted, a finance guy on one of their advisory committees that picked up the phone and called Ed Johnson. And so he, too, will be, he was active until just about three months before he died. He was still coming to Rotary lunches, even though he had, by this time, had a little hard of hearing and a little hard of seeing, but he was still there. So he, too, will be very missed. And one, brief thing on the SBWMA Task Force had its first meeting that you all asked me to sit in on. Everyone was present except for East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and Atherton. Two topics, we discussed a lot about the setting of rates, how that works, how it perhaps could work in a way where elected officials might have more, more early comment on rate coming, and also what various, what does a, what does a JPA governing structure look like? And so the Redwood City, City Manager and Assistant City Manager are going to do some research and bring back what, what other governing JPA looks like and take a look at that from our standpoint. So that was the first meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor Grum. Supervisor Pine, any report?
Yes, I just wanted to talk briefly about the visit I made to the hospital last week to see one of their reports out on the, on the lean process. I think, as everyone knows, that's a system for, you know, really trying to drive efficiency at the hospital. So the report out last Friday was on the coding for medical services done by OBGYN in the Coastside Clinic. And so coding, of course, is the key to billing, and billing is the key to revenue. You know, and one thing that was emphasized over and over is that if something isn't coded properly right at the beginning, it just launches this, you know, incredibly laborious effort to try to fix it, and sometimes it's, you can't even afford to fix it. So this lean process was really impressive. They pulled, what they did is they pulled together a cross-disciplinary team of about eight people, and they actually worked on this for a week. Everybody who touches the process, and there's a couple of terms that stood out. One is they, they tried, they defined something called standard work, which is tasks that need to be done the same way by everyone. And, you know, by doing that, your, the goal is, and you will get consistent results. Another thing they emphasized is trying to mistake-proof processes. So if you can, you know, eliminate errors at the front end. So they do this by planning what they're going to do, implementing it, checking it, training it, training people on it. So it was just really exciting to see the team, all eight spoke. They were so enthusiastic about what they'd accomplished, had so much pride in it, and they have made substantial headway. One, one metric they use is so-called whether the, whether the report is locked, and I guess, and that basically means everything has to be done. And in times past, that could take three days, and now it's, it's happening, you know, that, that day. And they're having a substantial, substantial reduction in mistakes. So I, I think, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, trying to make government efficient. I think this is, I see real dividends from this lean process.
Thanks, Dave. Supervisor Grum? Or not? Wrong, sorry.
That's good.
Supervisor Slough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank you for bringing up those comments on County Service Area 7. And it was somewhat shocking to me to hear the part about that we charge to answer citizen inquiries, emails, and phone calls. And it got me thinking after you were talking about, I wonder if that's going on in County Service Area 8, which is the North Fair Oaks area, because certainly we get a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails from, from County Service Area 8. And I would like to ask that perhaps the county manager report back on if that exists and if the practice is the same in CSA 8, and maybe other county service areas, because it just strikes me that, well, I can understand the rationale, the need for, for, for money, revenue, does strike me that it's at odds with the whole notion of what we're doing here. And so if we, if we could request that, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Thanks, Mark. Supervisor Tissier?
Yes, I have two adjourned memories. The first one is for Marie Victoria Van Eiderstein. She was, is the mother of Paul Van Eiderstein and Joy Murphy. She was 97 years old when she passed away. She was still shopping, cooking, and sewing. She was a member of many clubs and organizations in Millbrae. She was a consummate homemaker and always ready to experiment with a new recipe. She was an alumnus of Balboa High School, the class of 1933, and worked for years for the San Francisco Unified School District. Our sympathies go out to Paul and his, his family. My second one is for Alice Walsh. She was the wife of Jack Walsh, who was a retired captain, he passed away a while back, of the Daly City Police Department. She leaves behind her daughter Susan Crumpler and her son John Walsh. She was a lifelong resident of Daly City. She was a graduate of San Francisco State University, and she began her teaching career in Daly City in our schools, and she continued well into her latter years. She enjoyed helping others with tutoring and ESL skills until the age of 75. So our sympathies go out to the Walsh family. Also, I'd just like to make an announcement. I mentioned it a few minutes ago, we were talking about our Measure A funds, but on April 29th at Oracle, there will be a Violence Summit. It's, as I mentioned earlier, there's, it's, we're looking at how to standardize law enforcement response to schools should an event happen. We're also going to be talking about mental health and how we improve mental health services within our school to catch children at an early age, to be sure that any signs we may see that they get the necessary attention. And then the, one of those big issues that we have difficulty, and I'm sure we'll bring our county council into this, is information sharing. How can we share information between law enforcement, education, and our health services to be able to provide the necessary services? And oftentimes, you know, we have those walls, is it FERPA and HIPAA and all those? But they have been able to do this in other areas, so we're going to be looking at that as well. And this is being done in conjunction with Congresswoman Spears' office, Supervisor Horsley's office, the Office of Education, and our sheriff's department. So we are all working very closely to bring that summit to fruition on April 29th and hope to come, walk away with some important information that we can work on to, to look at those areas within our county.
I think that's an important conference, so thanks for reminding us about that. We'll now adjourn to closed session. Mr. Byers, could you report on the results of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The board did consider and discuss all of the items identified on the agenda for closed session except for item D, labor negotiations. That item was not taken up today. And the board took no action.
Well, the board will now adjourn, and thank you very much.